Welcome everyone to Swanee County Board of County Commissioners meeting of June 1st, 2021 at 5:00 PM. This afternoon before we stand, I would like to say just our thoughts and prayers going out to Commissioner Land's dads in the hospital, and he needs everybody's prayer here. He's fighting a good fight, but Commissioner Land's been with him all weekend. He's wore out, and we're gonna try to make things smooth here tonight where he can get back to his family. But I'd just like to ask everybody to please pray for him. Commissioner Fleming is gonna do our invocation and pledge, and I'm sure he'll say the same.
Thank you, sir.
I pray, oh Father, we come once again in your name. And, oh Father, we know that you're able to make a way. We know that you can do all things as you fell. We pray, God, that you have mercy this afternoon on the Land family. God, give strength, give healing. Oh, Father, I know that you're able to do all things if we ask in your name. We pray that you bless us in our meeting today, give us strength and give us understanding, wisdom, knowledge, watch over and protect us, guard our feet, tongue, heart, mind, and soul. Bless every heart in this building today, for we know that you're able, and we lean and independent on your holy name. And we trust, oh God, in your name today, that you will do what we ask. Father, you said, "I ask, you shall be given, seek, and you shall find." And, Father, we are asking these blessings in your name this afternoon, that you be with us, keep us safe, bless our families. Oh, Father, make a way. Look on Commissioner Land, ask a special blessing on his mother, and his father, and his siblings. Father, we ask these in all blessings. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our first item of business this evening is approval amendments from our May 18th, 2021 regular board meeting. Do I have any questions, comments, or do I have a motion to approve?
Mr. Chairman, I have a motion to approve.
Second. Have a motion by Commissioner Fleming, second by Commissioner White. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is the consent agenda, items two through seven. Do I have any questions or comments on any items?
Just, Mr. Chairman, item number six for discussion, please.
Yes, sir. I will pull item number six. So I have items two through five, and item number seven. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Have a motion by Commissioner Land.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Hale. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, same sign. Commissioner White, item six.
Just short and brief, just wanted to see what the, it says, budget impact to be funded from general fund. I was just wondering what that salary would be.
I don't have the salary. It's in your, well, you probably don't even have a budget.
No. It's no big deal. It was just a question.
I'll let you know what it is. There's a range in there, and it'll depend on the experience as well. So I'll get with you.
Understood. Thank you. That's it. Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, sir. At this time, do I have a motion to approve item six?
So moved.
Have a motion by Commissioner White.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Fleming. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. At this time, item number eight, at 5:05 PM or soon thereafter, as the matter can be heard, will hold a public hearing on the question of closing, vacating, renouncing, and disclaiming all right or interest of Swanee County, Florida, and public in and to an alley line between blocks eight and three in the Platte of O'Brien. At this time, we'll open the public hearing, and if anyone wishes to speak on this matter or thinks they might, I will have our county attorney, Mr. Pravat, swear you in. Mr. Pravat.
Thank you, sir, Mr. Chairman. Anybody, if you think you may testify, please stand up. All right, seeing none, staff, Mr. Meeks, do you swear or affirm the testimony you'll give before the board this evening will be the truth so help you God?
I do.
Thank you, sir.
At this time, I would like to welcome Mr. Meeks for staff presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, board members. What you have before you tonight is a request of a road closing of a 15-foot alleyway that lies between block eight and three in the old Platte of O'Brien. The alley is approximately 210 feet long, and is currently undeveloped. You've seen on the aerial that's attached with some of your backup documentation, one of the corner lots that actually corners up to this alleyway and 349 that is owned by Mrs. Jones. She has recently purchased that whole block, number eight, and that corner lot there is where the old post office of O'Brien is located. And actually, the survey shows that part of the parking area and parking lot for that old post office was located within that 15-foot alleyway that was currently there. The remainder of that that is a little farther south is currently wooded and undeveloped. The alleyway does fall between blocks eight and three. Block eight is entirely owned by Ms. Jones. Block three, which is the property that is to the immediate east, is owned by Ms. Harriet Wells. She has the kind of the emporium flea market that's there, and that's located on the adjoining block. So there's no other property owners that are affected by the closing of the alley. It does not block off anyone's current access. In accordance with Florida statutes, the closing of a road or alleyway in a situation like this would give ownership 50% in either direction, to the east and to the west. My conversations with county attorney, Mr. Pravat, we want to probably clean up some of the language that's in the resolution that you have before you tonight. We would ask that you would, you know, consider your motion in approving the closing of the alleyway, but we will modify that language to include the specified distances, in that Ms. Jones would receive seven and a half feet, and Ms. Wells would receive seven and a half feet, and it would be the length of the alleyway, which is 210 feet. I don't have anything else to add. I would enter the file into the record at this time, and answering the questions the board may have of me.
Thank you. We'll take the file and this composite exhibit number one.
Thank you, Mr. Pravat, Mr. Meeks. At this time, do I have any questions from the board for Mr. Meeks?
Mr. Chairman, I have one question.
Yes, sir. Commissioner Fleming.
Everybody's agreeing to all the residents in that area?
We haven't had any contact with any of them opposing that. Ms. Jones is one that made the request. Like I said, it's an undeveloped alleyway, so no one uses this currently as access. You can't through, you can't pass through from one road to the other. The old Platte of O'Brien was done so long ago that these alleyways and roads end up, you know, some of them have, in the past, went through people's houses, so we've had to close them after the fact, so.
Is that where that old post office?
Yes, sir.
In that area?
Right along 349, where the post office fronts 349. That's right there where that alleyway starts, and a portion of that parking lot is actually lying within the alleyway now.
I would ask one question also. The, so the two parties here, does the one lady understand that she's only gonna be getting half of that?
Mm-hmm.
Is she clear with that? It's just seven and a half foot?
Yes.
I just didn't want to come back after the fact and her say, "Well, I thought mine was going to 15," but.
No, we had that conversation with her. Her whole, she's, if any of you've been by that way, she purchased all of block eight, and she's currently in the process of remodeling some of those homes that are there, and I think she has some plans for the old O'Brien post office as well, and just in part of that development and making sure that no one tries to cut through there or anything like that. They just wanted to close off that access.
So no one actually, no one actually used that?
No, sir.
No motorbikes, no, nothing?
No, sir.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
You can't even drive through it, can you, Ron?
No.
I didn't think so.
Any other, Commissioner Land?
Is the other landowner, not Ms. whichever one that applied, Ms. Jones applied?
Right.
Is the other landowner okay too? I mean, she's good with taking over the maintenance and responsibilities for her half that she's gonna?
Well, I mean, it would almost, it wouldn't be forced on her. I mean, the thing that would be is if she ever wanted to, I mean, statutes would give her ownership of property. She would have the right to do with that. If she chose to, on her own, end up deeding that to Ms. Jones, she could do that. Ms. Wells actually fronts 93rd, which is the road that is to the immediate east. So I mean, as far as what her plans would be for that, she would probably leave it undeveloped or either would claim that to Ms. Jones.
She's probably using it now.
Yeah.
Or maintaining it. I'm good.
Any other questions from the board?
No.
At this time, I'll open the floor to public comment. Do I have anyone in the public wishing to speak on this matter? Seeing none, I'll close public comment at this time. If we have no further board discussion, I will ask for, do I have a motion to adopt this resolution?
So moved.
I have a motion by Commissioner White.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Land. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Meeks.
Thank you, gentlemen.
At this time, I'll close public hearing. Moving ahead to item number nine, we'll welcome Mr. Jimmy Norris. Now I'll let you introduce your guest.
Thank you. Glad to be here. Apologize a little bit, my throat's going, so trying to talk as much as I can, or as least as I can. So I'm gonna bring forward Mr. Dana Berman. And Dana is a great individual that I met several years ago when I was over at the Chamber, and he's put a lot of blood, sweat, and tears into City of Live Oak in Swanee County. And so we kind of wanted to spotlight what he's done just a little bit, show a few pictures of some of the before and after of the projects that he's working on. And so I'm gonna let him kind of fill you in all the details. We're gonna kind of walk through a couple of things, and please, if there's any questions, you know, he's a pretty nice guy sometimes. So, Mr. Dana, if you want to join us up here, I'd like to introduce Dana Berman, developer, entrepreneur, and the master of the old Pick 'n Save building, so Dana.
Welcome, sir.
I appreciate it. Thanks for the introduction. I don't know if I can live up to all that, but Dana Berman for Live Oak Investments.
Can you give your address too, please? It doesn't matter which one, just for.
Your own address? It's right behind a Live Oak sub shop. It's 132 Van Buren.
Fair enough. Yes, sir.
How did you find Live Oak, Dana?
How I found Live Oak? I think it's a matter of luck. We had finished up some project, I'd done this all my life, and we'd finished some projects in South Florida. I spent a great deal of time looking for things that were, I felt, underpriced and undervalued, and I went up and down the state off of every major highway. And I found the Pick 'n Save in the old Beaver Bulk property. I didn't realize they were 1,000 feet apart, and I made appointments with two different realtors to come see them, not realizing both realtors worked for the same office. So I went to one, and I was like, I was like, "Are you guys okay?" And they're like, "Yeah, it's fine." So anyways, I saw immediately, you know, potential value in both of them, and we purchased them. The initial idea wasn't what it turned into. It's developed and changed, and, you know, a lot of it's dictated by the post office choosing the space, the Pick 'n Save. If the post office didn't take it, it would have been something else. We started reaching out and marketing to anybody and everybody. I got a lot of input from individuals, you know, once we purchased it, and people saw us working, everybody and their mother drove up there, "What are you doing with it? What are you doing with it? You know, we need stuff for this, we need stuff for that." And we reached out, in any case, the post office was interested, and we went into the, I guess, competing to get the lease. And it was a great period of time, so we kind of sat in limbo. And when they finally made the decision, that basically sent us in a direction on that building. At the same time, we purchased the Beaver Bulk storage across the street. And the price I paid, again, there wasn't a plan, but I knew there was value, and we didn't need to make much to at least have it carry itself and do something. And we started cleaning it, cleaning it, cleaning it, 70 truckloads of debris and recycling metal later, you know, we finally got to the bare bones of it, and we started breaking it down. We decided to go with the concrete block construction and clean it up. We were able to sign a lease with Midstate. They took one of the buildings, and they're based in Lakeland, but they have a hub here, where they have roughly 55, 60 employees up here. They're a huge industrial maintenance contractor, and they're actually everywhere. They're in Southern Georgia, I think they're actually in Pennsylvania now. They have, I think, about 800 employees within the entire company. Will Howland needed a place for roasting his coffee beans. He ended up being a second tenant, and we built out a place for him. At the same time, we're also building out a place for him for his retail, which is next to the post office. So it's almost like the tail wagged a dog. You know, the tenants started coming in, we started sort of maneuvering and playing, trying to accommodate each tenant, and at this point, we're 100% full. We have 19 tenants, including our management office. The last five or six tenants were delivering their units, and the next, I guess, this month and into July will be completely delivered as far as the unit build-out. City of Live Oak's been phenomenal. These were single, both properties were single-tenant, single-user properties. They had one source of power, one source of water. When we converted, the city wanted everything individually metered, which we did, which was a huge expense. It's better in the long run for us as a landlord, because obviously the tenants are responsible for their expenses. But as far as granting unit numbers or addresses, you know, the meters, I mean, everything, it actually went very smooth. We've used a huge amount of local workforce, almost, you know, anybody and everybody. Yeah, I can go on forever with the list, but the list is substantial, and it's a tremendous amount of local people. Where in the worst, we couldn't find somebody local, and we went as far as Gainesville or Jacksonville, but generally speaking, everything was really within Swanee County, maybe Columbia County. Hometown Plumbing, they're actually based out of Lake City. They ended up becoming one of our tenants here, they're doing some work here, so they relocated here, and they have 10 or 12 employees. On the Beaver Bulk or the I-10 Commerce, which we call it now, the tenant maker we have is roughly 120 employees. We have a gym that has, it's two sections of the gym, one gym has 35 or 40 clients, the other gym, I think, has 60 or 70 clients. They come in different hours a day, every day of the week. Like I said, Midstate has roughly 55 employees. Some come there once a day, some come there once a week, some come there once a month. We have Mirror Salon, and Jeff, correct me if I misquote this, but they have roughly 300 or 400 clients a month that go to that salon. Shelly wants photography, single employee, you know, open two or three days a week for her appointments. We have a candle company that's moving in there, candle manufacturer. They don't take any walk-in business, they're strictly mail-order. They have four or five employees. So the traffic we're generating, you know, is into the multiple hundreds per month. We spoke with the city, the city is doing a study, and what they need to try to figure out about repaving Palm Street. That's the single biggest issue I have to contend with, and everybody complains, you know, from Midstate on down the line, it's, you know, it's a complaint. And, you know, obviously, I don't want to lose these tenants. They're all happy, they're all doing well, they like the location, but the street has become a huge issue. And originally, I guess there wasn't much need because it's just Columbia ready-mix, and they said, you know, "It's just you guys, we don't need anybody else." Now, even their traffic is increased because they're doing some of the business. So, you know, like I said, the city's working, and I guess getting their reports and things in order, but, you know, I need help there. That's kind of what I'm here to ask you, you know, whatever the county can do to help the city, we really appreciate it. That's it.
Well, we skipped the presentation, but.
Yeah.
It's off the hips, so, you know.
No, we just, I appreciate that, but what I am gonna do is, we're gonna click through some of these pictures before and after, so if you don't mind.
And, Mr. Chairman, Jimmy, if you don't mind, I would like to say something. I think he's being modest. I've met Mr. Dana, I've gone out and visited both locations several times, and what he's done is he's taken two major eyesores here in Swanee County, and he's turned them into something that we can all be proud of, in my opinion. And they're employing people. Obviously, they're something that our community could use, those businesses. I think there's a medical place going in one as well.
So we have an urgent care.
Right.
We call the Pick 'n Save Live Oak Commons. There's an urgent care in there, she's doing well. The Gathering is gonna open their second location there. Hopefully, the next 45 days they'll open. They're not closing the other, keeping that open also.
Right, right.
We're actually building a mezzanine in here. It's just gonna have a second story, which is probably the only two-story restaurant in Swanee County. It's gonna be really kind of cool. Southeastern Metals is building a mezzanine for us. We have a medical group looking, taking a big backspace. They're based in Lake City, internal medicine, Guardian, Lightem is moving in, Career Resources or Career Source is moving in. We have a lady that does semi-precious or non-precious jewelry, artistry. Gold Leaf Pond has moved in there. It's quite a good make-up. Merle Norman, Victoria's Fashion, everybody that's in there so far has seen a multiple increase in business, just a huge increase. Post Office, I don't know how they ever managed at the other facility. The amount, you know, we're there all day, all hours of day and night working, and I had to do a lot of planting for the city, and of course, as soon as I planted, we had a drought, so we're out there 24/7 dumping water on all the plants. So traffic, middle of the night, you know, people are sitting in their P.O. box, reading letters in the car, and going, it just, it just never stops. There's a lot happening.
He's talking about the road there, too. What was the pond, was it a pond, you said?
Yes.
The name of the road? When he had me out there showing me, the young lady that has the hair salon, yeah, yeah, and there was a lot of traffic there. I asked her, was there anything she could do for me when he introduced me to her, but wasn't nothing she could do, so. But I tried, but he did bring that to my attention, and I'm glad you brought it up tonight, because I was wanting to mention it to our board. Fellas, I don't know how you feel about it, but go look at it if you get a chance. I mean, you know, my, me and Jimmy was talking about, my suggestion was, I know we have tractors, and we have people that know how to tear the road up, and I know we got guys that prep our chip seal roads and stuff like that, so maybe we could do something to help the city out in that fashion or something like that. So that was just one of the thoughts that me and Jimmy was bouncing around.
There's been discussions, and I really didn't want to get that deep in it, but the city's working on it. It's in the CRA district, so there's funding there coming along.
And I think they're looking for some of that.
They're lacking just a little bit. If there was a way for us to help them, I think it'd be a great little project for us to team up on, it's only, I don't know, a quarter mile or something, it's a very short little piece. But it was certainly helped, you know?
Yeah.
The businesses and Dana, and he's even offered to go in and landscape and dress all of, I mean, he's, he didn't even tell you, some of the space he's actually donated.
We're donating one space to the Guardian, Lightem. They were great to us, and they're paying. My market price on the I-10, on the commons, on the old Pick 'n Save is below whatever else is brand-new out there. You know, we're about, actually, we're $12 a foot, which I know I'm a little bit low, but I've got great tenants, and everybody pays on time. This, up here is very different than South Florida, and we were laughing about this today. South Florida, I've gotta chase people for rent. You gotta be there at 6:00 AM Sunday morning, you know, four or five times. Up here, the people look for you to pay, you know? So we're taking care of them, they've taken care of us. But Guardian needed space, basically, it's a closet for the kids. When they pick the kids up, a lot of times the kids don't have what they need, and this would be a place where they would go in, and there'd be clothing, and toothbrushes, utensils, and so forth, knapsacks, everything, backpacks, whatever, for them to pick up. So we, basically, my last unit at the warehouses were donated to the Guardian as a way for them to do this for the kids. I think one of the churches is gonna donate staffing. They're not gonna be open every day. They're gonna be open on as-needs basis, so they'll get a call that they have some children who need something, someone will go over there and open a place up and let them go in and pick out what they need. But we, basically, they're paying their electricity and water, and that's, they're not paying rent. It was, like I said, it was a give-back. Everybody's been good to us here, you know, I love it here, we've been real lucky with everything, and, you know, I think it's a little bit, you know, everybody needs to give back.
There you go.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Dana, I met him a while back. I've been supplying him the plants and stuff that's been going out there.
One to you on the plant.
But anyhow, I know some of them are looking a little rough right now, but I just want to tell you thank you, and I've been out there, and I've looked at it, and they've showed me around both places, and it's really amazing what they've done with it. It's really nice, and he's right about the road. It's pretty rough.
I appreciate it. It's funny, some of the trees, all the leaves came off, we just kept watering them. I didn't want to pull them out. Sure enough, all of a sudden, little green leaves are popping back, so I think, I think we, most of them.
Well, I just want to say thank you. You helped another local business, too, so I appreciate that.
You've been great, just, you know.
Well, I'm gonna click through a few of these pictures, and if you guys have questions, please ask. We're not gonna talk about every single picture, but kind of, we're gonna start with the Pick 'n Save building.
Okay.
And so if you don't mind, you can kind of narrate what that is.
Well, that was the infant's back pond that had its own entire wildlife ecosystem in it.
Which was the loading dock.
That was a loading dock, and it, and actually, the post office took the entire loading dock, they took the entire, that part, looks completely different now, but yes, that was the loading dock. That was the front entry, I guess, where, actually, that's staying almost where the glass enclosure everybody remembers was.
That's really not the building, but we were trying to show there the paving, the driveway, if you guys remember, if any of you guys remember plowing through that movie?
The truckers were staying there a night before we purchased it, just a lot of truck traffic, which is what tore that up. It was not driving over, it was all the sharp turns, and actually, that's a little thorough fake going into on Badcock, which we repaved all that. A lot of people miss Badcock when they're coming, they're heading south, because you see our building first. So they end up, more people come through our entry and then run through their back into the Badcock facility, and we kept it open and repaved. That was what the electricity used to look like, the power, back of the building. That was starting the demolition.
Right, we're gonna show, because they're not completed with the project, obviously, so some of this is completed and finished, but some of it they're still working on, so you can kind of tell what we're looking at, the side between walls.
So this is the Ford side, and then the other issue we had there, which was tough for us, the building was landlocked on two sides, on the south and the west side. The property line was literally the corner of the structure, so it took a long time, but we were able to buy 60 feet on two sides from Waltz Ford, and they were phenomenal, they weren't being difficult, but they had an army of lawyers, and they're also dealing with the Dodge Chrysler franchise, and they didn't want to sell them, still short with space. There's a lot of maneuvering to get that 60 feet, which allowed, we don't have, that does not have 129 access, it's all inside the property, but it gives us driveway both ways, all the way around the entire perimeter of the property, plus parking, all the way around every side of the property. So it changed, it changed, again, if we didn't get that, then we had to develop the back in a different manner. A lot of this waiting and hesitating was trying to see what happened with things like this. That took over a year also. So that, again, is looking from the Ford property over. We opened up the building to create that storefront, open elevation all the way around.
So in the back, where you're gonna do the drive all around?
Yes, sir, all the way around, plus parking all the way around. It ties back into the driveway, and there's exit on Hamilton, and then back out on 129. And that's, actually, that's from the Ford side looking over, and that's the front.
I'm sure you guys are seeing the new sign on that front.
That was just when they were starting to move in, the first tenants.
Both of those are.
That was the post office. C.A. Boone did all the asphalt work for us. It was substantial, and again, this new section was starting from scratch, there was nothing existing, so they're removing all the dirt now, starting to put the lime rock down, probably about another four weeks of asphalt. And there's just some night, because we had to do a lot of work in the lighting. We went over what was required. The post office had minimum requirements. We went way, I like light. We went way, way over in the lighting. If you go by there at night, you can see everything almost from I-10. A lot of light and actually we took some of that lighting idea over to the warehouses. If you get on the warehouses now, it's, we're not finished, but there's a lot more lighting on even Palm Street.
So I hope just on this one project, you can see the, the difference. And as that corridor develops, this has been a high soil for seven years and now we can work at it, which we go by and done a great, great job.
Had a lot of help, as I said, I had a great group of people helping me and like I said, it wasn't all my ideas, it kind of evolved, you know, it's a lot of people's input. Almost done.
Part two.
Warehouses.
Now, I don't know if a lot of you guys are familiar with this warehouses or live down Palm Street. I wish you could see this place before it even started. So I'll start going through and scrap them.
Yeah, these were just before pictures and again, it's from different sites on the property, looking into the property. That was one of the loading docks. There's a lot of useless buildings there. They were just garage or shed style buildings, which we removed. This is also removing the metal siding, we converted to concrete block. There's more buildings that were cleaned up and removed, in the process of being removed, demolition. Yeah, that's Jeff there, driving that truck.
You got a part of that process as well?
Yes.
This was inside the building obviously, and I mean, the posters was great.
That's just more pictures of the demolition and clean out. It seemed like it was never ending. The old guardhouse. That's it now.
And we, we've got a few after pictures, but the building to your right, the larger building there, the taller one, you see that's the, you know, state supply building and then the, the lower roof building in the back is actually the raw intent of the building.
Correct. You know, industrial people want high ceilings, so the, the midstate grabbed the tall building immediately, that worked for them, they had a lot of requirements. We actually had to have a transformer brought in from F.T.N.L., a lot of the other stuff. The main building worked out for small bay and small businesses that don't need the huge ceiling height. The last one, which you have in touch, which is in the back, the blue one, we have a guy that fabricates trailers and trusses. And again, that one has a tall ceiling height also. We, we got, it's, it's a mix. It's, the mom and pops worked out perfect for the lower ceiling. It's just, we did glass storefronts all the way around, opened it up, bay doors, yeah, I mean, that's.
You can see that building before then and what it looks like now. Just looking at these guys, we had, we had a bunch with them. They told us what, 30 employees?
Yep.
And they're at, wherever they are.
55C, they're a monster.
So, and they are also doing a ton of work at Solomon. So they, they've got, every time we go out there, there's three or four Detroit's out there working at Solomon. One of the reasons that they came is when they found out Ben Holt's called, called Solomon. They were a business that, that landed here, but calls it that.
So they did a 12-month lease initially, which was scary for us because we spent so much money on their build out. They re-upped for 39 months on top of 12 months, which again, because they were getting the contract out here and all, all their, the stuff they were hoping for, I guess, came through. Yeah, so they, they now are in there for another, almost four years, three and a half years.
And this is the old warehouse we were sitting at when you see the tall now. Some of the new storefronts, as you can see, they, that's kind of what it looks like now. I do have one last one that I put in there just for you.
That's it.
But if you guys have questions, I know we've been up here a little while and we already talked a little bit, but I just want to introduce you guys to, to Mr. Burnham and what he's done. He's really taken some properties out of just, I don't know how to grow a black line, to be honest with you. Added him to the tax roll, put his people to work and he's done a great job. So, you know, if there's, you know, anything that you'd like to ask or comment on, please feel free to. That's the end of the picture.
Thank you, sir. I'd just like to thank, thank you for finding Live Oak and.
I'm glad I did. It was luck. So happy here. I appreciate it. I probably took more than planned, but I appreciate it. You got anything else?
No. Mr. Chairman, I'd just tell Dana thanks too. I mean, us, us in the community drive by, drive by these locations for years and never see the opportunity and sometimes it takes a guy from out of town to come in and, you know, find the diamond in the rough, so to speak, and polish it up and, and has turned something what was an ice ore into some nice tenant space for folks. Pretty appreciate it.
Mr. Chairman, I didn't see any pictures of the inside. I was hoping you'd have some, but it's really a unique way that you guys have gone in and designed that, that it still has the, the beams in it from the building and stuff like that. That's, that's kind of cool to me.
He was supposed to send me that.
Yeah, yeah.
No, I'm horrible with photos. I have like 4,000 photos, you know, like my kids in the field, I had to do everything where I can create a slideshow, but, but I have photos, I mean, that's the problem. Someone says send photos, it takes me hours to figure out just enough to send where you're not killing them too much.
Right.
You know, and you get the point across.
Yep. And I was a little worried.
Anytime you want to come out, I'd be happy to show anybody.
I was a little worried in the beginning when I found out Jeff was helping you out, but I guess that, I guess that's turned out okay, so.
He's been, that's my big stick. He's been a key, key lean to guy.
Emphasis on the big.
He can fit with my temper, tantrums, my start throwing stuff.
Mr. Fleming?
I, I would like to say thank you for, for thinking about Suwannee County and that is in my district.
Excellent, excellent. Glad to hear that.
Come by, visit with you a little bit.
Well, come on out, I'd be happy to give you a tour of both places. I'm here full-time, you know, it's, my kids came, but I haven't seen them like in four months. So the last time I was in Miami was for 16 hours. I went in, had a meeting and came right back up, so getting used to it.
Would they like to get up and say a few words?
You guys want to say anything?
Kids got anything? We all are.
Yeah.
Yep.
We're good?
We're good.
Thank you so much.
Thanks Dana, thank you. Thanks, thank you, thank you.
Mr. Jimmy, it's kind of unplanned, but you know, we have another gentleman here that.
Yeah, yeah, I did. I'm sorry, this was kind of a little bit unexpected, but just wanted real quick before I sit down, so don't want to come back up and get on the blacklist, you know, on the bad one, so the commissioner don't, you know.
Why do you look at me?
I just know you run a tight ship. So, but anyway, you know, we've been working on this and several people out here have talked to us about it. I know Mr. Hancock's asked me about it a couple of times about, you know, the Kubota dealership and, and some of you guys, we've talked about it, that as well. Well, I'm, I'm happy to say that we have in our presence tonight the new owner of the, the Kubota dealership in town. And he happened to finally, I think, close on Friday. Something's been working on for a long, long time.
Jimmy Brainett, gentleman up.
So, Mr. Daryl Futch, I just want to introduce you real quick. And he actually called me, said he saw something on the gin about tractor. I don't know what he saw.
Welcome, sir.
Thanks, sir. I'm Daryl Futch, I actually live in Palaca. We have a Kubota dealership in Hastings, a small one in Palaca and two outdoor power stores in Keystone and St. Augustine and a Kubota dealership in Gainesville. We bought the Kubota, I mean, the Live Oak and the Madison store. And we're planning on building a new building out on 72 across from our competition and we're doing a major remodel in Madison. Been in the business about 13 years. I got a great team, they're all here now, they'll be here for a few weeks and everybody has a job that's been there and most of them like us and hopefully all stay, so we're planning on helping with the community anything we can, so.
Awesome, and we're glad to have you. What, what do you think your timeframe is of moving to your new location?
We're hoping by April 1st. I actually, I'm ordering, I've, I've had a company design my building and everything, I'm actually ordering it tomorrow and delivery should be around November. And so we're going to try to push it through and try to open around April 1st.
Yes. Very good. Do you have any questions for Mr. Futch?
I'd just like to say welcome and thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
Welcome.
My mom was actually from Live Oak. She's passed away now, but she was a butler, but she was born and raised here.
How about that?
Her family was, so.
Well, welcome home.
Definitely. Glad to have you, glad to have you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much, gentlemen. Appreciate y'all.
Thank you.
Moving ahead to our general business, item number 10, discuss possible board action tract lease agreement. Mr. Harris.
Mr. Chairman, commissioners, I'm going to ask that we hold off on this for a couple more weeks, bring it back in the next regular meeting. I had a conversation with Mr. Futch today and they'd like to put some numbers together. We'd been using numbers on Sheriff's Association contract, but I think we should oblige him and give him an opportunity and I'll bring this back in a couple of weeks.
Absolutely.
Fair enough.
Yeah. Moving on to item number 11, discuss possible board action purchase of equipment from Palm Beach County Solid Waste Authority auction. Mr. Harris.
I got a, an email. I, I don't know how I get these blanket emails from time to time, but last week I received one regarding an auction that the Solid Waste Authority in Palm Beach County is having. Apparently every four or five years, they get rid of all of the equipment they have and buy brand new. They apparently have a lot more money than other small rural communities do. In any event, there were some items on there that I had particular interest in because we had just entered into this agreement with waste management on the transfer of our waste to the Chester Island facility in Georgia. In that agreement, we made sure that we provided for the ability to get out of paying them to handle the transfer of that waste. The cost of that is about just under a million dollars a year, $975,110. So I took that price and I went ahead and ran numbers for you. You've got on the second page of the item that we passed out, you've got the one that's titled options. I started with that number of 975,000 and I put some scenarios, a scenario together where the county would handle that transportation ourselves. You've got the cost of labor, fuel, maintenance, those would be annual fixed expenses and then I ran costs on, if you see down there, about the third section down where it says initial expenses for equipment. Those numbers that you're looking at are for purchase of brand new equipment based on some numbers in the Sheriff's Association contract and I added some to them due to some uncertainty on what the numbers would be if we were actually purchasing and some other ancillary options that need to be added to some of that equipment. So I took the total cost of that equipment and then ran it through Lease2, which is the company that handles most of our financing on equipment. That came to about $198,000 a year. When you add that to your fixed expense, you come up with a number of 629,000, just about $630,000 per year that it would cost us to transport that waste instead of paying 975,000. So there's about a $345,000 savings if we do that. Now, I'm going to try to pull in the issue of the auction that started me putting all these numbers together. They happen to have a lot of the trailers, the very specific type of trailer that's used for moving waste with, from transfer stations and they've got the semi-tractors as well. So my request is that you authorize us to go down there and bid some of these items. I volunteered Commissioner White to participate in that since he's our trucking man. And I'd like to send another member of our staff down there as well, but this auction is occurring on Saturday. I've showed you in that cover page that we would have to use, some of our funding options would be solid waste funds and, and/or some funds from the general fund. If we purchase any of those items, then we would also have to come back here and then have a special meeting to go ahead and authorize payment. One thing that delayed getting this material to you is I had to make sure that the auction company would agree that we could have about a week's time to process the payment and get it back to them. Typically, they want you to pay if you're bidding this stuff and you're successful. They want you to go ahead and pay while you're there. So we've reached out to them and communicated the way that we have to operate. So if they were successful this weekend in procuring any of that equipment, then we would have to have a special meeting to authorize the payment. And I'll also go ahead and point out that I've shown you the prices of brand new equipment. If we are successful in buying any of the equipment down there, used, that's in good shape, it would reduce our initial expense for equipment and simply increase that potential savings cost that you see at the bottom of that page. So all the details on how these numbers were calculated are increased in the backup information and I'll be glad to answer any questions for you if I can. In fact, let me, I'll go ahead and point out, you'll see that I, I use some inflated numbers on fuel and some other things here because we've seen those go up and go down throughout a budget year and I tried to make sure that we'd be covered on our fuel costs in these estimates that were run for this purpose.
At this time, I'll open. Any questions from the board, from Mr. Harris, discussion on this matter?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir, from Mr. White.
Mr. Harris had called me about this and, and when he saw it on the auction and, and of course I, he asked me to go and I agreed to go look at it with the, with another staff member and I looked at all the mileage and I looked at what they had to offer there and I'm not saying we can get it and I'm not saying we should overpay for it, but if you could just, if it's in pretty decent shape and I looked at the trucks, they're low mileage trucks. So if we can be successful at that, I think this would be a real opportunity to help with this garbage issue that we've got coming, so I just wanted to put that out there.
Mr. Chairman, what, you, I have a question?
Yes, sir. Commissioner Fleming?
What are the model year of the trucks?
The trailers are 2015 to 2019 and their trucks, I don't remember what.
I think there were.
Seventeen, sixteen?
Some of them were fifteens, I can't remember now. We had, there's quite a few of them too. That's why I feel pretty good about it. If somebody else is bidding on these as well, there were so many of them that I felt like we could get some of them.
But those trucks are at like 230 to 300,000 miles, which on a truck ain't, ain't a lot of miles, but looked like pretty decent equipment. It's just, you'd have to do, you just need to go and look at it and inspect it and, and see where it goes.
Yeah, I mean, I'm, I'm in support of it. I, I feel confident with Commissioner White going, I, I feel even better that he's willing to go on a Saturday.
Hey, you pay me on salary.
24/7.
That's right.
But without seriousness, is this something that, I mean, I'd ask for, Commissioner Hill, you got comments, Commissioner?
No, I mean, I, I don't, but I mean, obviously someone's going to go look at it. Mr. White, I feel confident to do so. As long as he don't buy one like he bought for himself on that last go around, I think. I heard a little bit about that one, but no, I think it's, is this something, did you say you guys have already seen some of this product, Mr. White, or?
Well, I looked at it on, they got it on the website, auction website. I mean, there's nothing like looking at it up close and personal, but just, it was worth making the trip, I'll say, from what I've seen on the website.
Gotcha. Commissioner Land?
I'll just echo what Commissioner Hill said. I mean, I think if anybody's qualified on this board to go look at trucks and trailers, it'd be Commissioner White. He's in the business.
I appreciate y'all's confidence.
On the financing part, Mr. Harris, would, would we, we'd finance that? I mean, whatever the purchase price is total, assuming we purchase something, this, this company would finance it for us so we can amortize it out? Or is this just hypothetical?
I'm not sure about the used equipment. The, the numbers that I ran on finance were on purchasing brand new equipment. I was trying to show you the worst case scenario.
Yeah, this is.
I was taking the highest priced equipment, buying it brand new and show you the worst case scenario and even with that, and we know that they'll finance that, that was programmed out over five years.
I got you.
So it still showed us the savings of $345,000. And, you know, I think all of us, well, let me say it this way, I don't think any of us were real happy with the numbers that we came back with on that bid on the solid waste, but having said that, we had it broken out into components. There's not a great deal that we can do to tremendously impact the cost of disposal. So this really is the only thing that we can do to make a difference is in the cost of the transportation. If we can save 345,000 or more per year, that's not too bad.
I, the only thing I would add to it is, and I would ask for the board's thoughts on this, is should we set some type of parameter on what the number's going to be, what, I'm saying, don't exceed, not to exceed.
Mr. Harris, so Franklin don't go spend $5 million.
Right, right, we got, we got to be able to pay.
I was planning on getting me a couple while I was there.
We got to be able to pay for what he bids on.
No, I would, I, I would say half the cost of new.
Yeah, I would. I, I mean, I was thinking...
I wouldn't go over that. At that point, it becomes not, not a right deal for us, I would think.
And I would agree with that. You have the, those new numbers in here, which were taken from Sheriff's Association.
I mean, my thoughts was a half million. I mean, if you just...
It was about what he said, so...
Yeah, I mean, that's a little...
I don't have a problem with that.
Just saying if we don't exceed, not to exceed that.
I'm good with that. Mr. White's pretty...
He's very frugal.
He's pretty frugal, yeah.
He runs a tight ship.
I'll spend it like I spend mine.
He'll...
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to say that I feel comfortable that the commission is going. And, and then I was, I feel, it's like a, like a protection. And he's going, and he's finding out you're in the trucking business. I know something about truck, truck, federal, but you're in the trucking business. My job is to stop you. But anyway, I...
Make sure he's not overloaded.
Yeah, not, and keep him compliant. So, I was asking him about the length of the trailer, but...
I think those are actually 48-foot trailers that are down there. They're 100-yard trailers.
Yeah, I'm pretty sure that's right, and they're walking floor trailers.
Yeah, I see these trailers quite often.
Well, the beauty of this is they already spec'd those trucks for those trailers, and they're already equipped to run those trailers. It ain't like buying a new truck where you got to go through that process to get it. And it was like I was telling Mr. Harris, even after a year, say we run them a year, no issues, and we want to replace one of them with a new one, it gives you that option, I think, to ease into the new equipment and get rid of the old equipment. And at that point, you'd have all new equipment over several years. It's kind of the way I was thinking, but then again, it all depends on how bad somebody wants it at an auction, so if it gets too much, I won't, I won't buy it.
Sometimes you just happen to be at the right place at the right time, and, you know, it sells way less than what you thought. So, I'm, I'm happy and I'm appreciative that you're willing to go down there and take a look for us.
More than happy.
If we don't have any success there, then we need to come back and regroup and figure out what we're going to do about moving forward. Possibly purchasing new. So, any other further board action on this, Mr. Harris?
Mr. Chairman, just as a technical thing, in case there is anything down there...
I, I have it listed here.
Oh, you have it listed? Okay.
If, if we get beyond these questions, I've got three items listed here that need to occur.
All right.
Do y'all have any other questions or comments? Okay, at the bottom of your cover page on here, I, I put requested action. If there is a motion to authorize this, then, and you can do this on one motion, but you would be declaring the procurement of the auction items a public purpose. Number two, you'd be declaring the auction a sole source for procurement. And number three, you'd be authorizing a commissioner and member of staff to participate in the auction. So if you make a motion to authorize this, those are, all three would be included in the motion.
Yep. Only thing I would ask is, Mr. Pravat, is that satisfactory?
Yes, sir. We went through it beforehand.
Okay.
I didn't know who was going to be mentioning it.
Fair enough. So that, that covers everything we need to cover, then?
Yes, sir.
At this time, I'll entertain a motion, gentlemen.
Mr. Chairman, I have a motion.
I have a motion by Commissioner Fleming.
Say it.
I have a second by Commissioner Hale. Basically, just to clarify, agenda item number 11, there were requested actions of one, two, and three to be included in this motion.
Right.
I have a motion by Commissioner Fleming, a second by Commissioner Hale, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen. At this time, if I'm clear, we don't have any additional agenda items. Thank you, Mandy. At this time, I'll, item number 14, I will open the floor to public comment. If I have anyone from the public wishing to speak on any items, please make your way to the podium at this time. Seeing none, I'll close public comment. This time, we'll go to closing comments. Mr. Pravat, you have anything?
No, sir.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Harris?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Commissioner White?
Just like to say I'm thinking about Travis and his family and his dad, and I really, I like Mr. Terry a lot, and done a lot of business with him over the years, and, and sure hope he pulls through this, and I sure pray for him.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Fleming?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to say tonight how, let me see how I want to put this. We had a great meeting tonight, I would say that. Appreciate everyone, you commissioners. We all have different opinions about things at times, but it shows, it proves our group of men come together, get things done, and things accomplished. Sometimes there's a, just a little slight difference, but God always have a way of bringing us back. I'm making this about a point. I'm thinking about Terry, Commissioner's land father. What seems bad, God make a way out of no way. All things are possible through him. We just have to trust and believe in his word, what he's saying, and I, and I know you do. Chairman, that's it.
Thank you, Commissioner Fleming. Commissioner Land?
Um, where do I start? It's been a long week. I'm not going to go into all the details, but Dad's been in ICU for 11 days, and it's been a roller coaster, highs and lows, and I want to thank the, you know, this board for reaching out, and, and like Commissioner Fleming said, you know, we often have differences of opinions, but, I mean, we're all God's people, and we all come together. We're all Swanee Countyans, and, and, and at a time of need, that shines through over, over and above any differences that we may have from time to time. And I want to thank, you know, the staff. I've had a bunch of them reach out to me, the community. It's good to be in Live Oak. Tremendous amount of support, and my family thanks each and every one of y'all. And we will continue to thank you. God's in control, and we know that, and we're just going to be faithful to his will. Thanks.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Hale?
Just a few things. Obviously, Commissioner Land's always on our mind, and I did have a chance to speak with him last week, on his way down there, actually. And I think y'all got a little bit of good news over the weekend, and like he said, it's been a roller coaster, so do keep him and his family in your prayers. And our little town's been hit by a lot of craziness here lately. I just wanted to mention the Sansoucy family, the Rogers and Linton family, and also the Freenock family. We've had three deaths in this little, small town the last seven days, and it hits hard and it hits home. Things you're going through, things I've had to go through in the past with my family, and I know we've all been there, so don't take nothing for granted, every day. Count your blessings. And I just hope everybody had a safe Memorial Day weekend.
Absolutely. I echo that. I, I don't know, absolutely all those families you mentioned, and the Moss family, I'm not sure if you said that, but Mr. Ron Moss's wife...
Yep, yep.
Passed away. Just a wonderful family, and they was part owners in Swanee River Log Homes back in the day, if people may understand or remember that. But just really great people, just, just would do anything in the world for you, and she was sweetest lady. But it, it's funny how you can get up here and argue, throw your sucker in the dirt. You can go home, be mad. You can come back the next day, and all that seems so small. And just that quick, that's happened to us. So, we're going to continue praying for Mr. Terry. He's been a real good friend to me and mentor. You would never find that bag of work no harder.